Good evening. I'd like to call the February 8th, 2022 meeting of the Deer County Board of Education Order. We're meeting at Cape Hatteras Secondary School and the time is 5:04. Before we begin, I would like to request a moment of silence and for two particular individuals. David Twitty is not here today. His father-in-law is ill. And also I'd like to take a pause for Bob Woodard, who's our chairman of the Board of Commissioners. His mother just passed away recently. So if we'd all, in a moment of silence, please remember these people. Thank you. Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Balance for providing the welcome and leading the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We had the opportunity to tour the Cape Hatteras schools this morning. At Cape Hatteras Elementary School, we started. It was great to see the kids in school and enjoying music and lots of different activities. We came over to the high school this afternoon. The shop teacher, Mr. Durham, and our art teacher, Mr. Paxton, are working on the project for the quilt. What's it called? Quilt? Barn Quilt. The Barn Quilt Project that they're collaborating together with their shop group. And that was really exciting to see. I'm looking forward to seeing how that pans out. And everybody can look for an opportunity to purchase their projects. And the shed getting ready to be finished, the last project that Mr. Hooper was able to be a part of. So that's all exciting and bittersweet. So we had a fun-filled day with lots going on and looking forward to moving forward. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Balance. I'd like to mention that David Twitty is not here, but he's going remotely. So he will be involved with the process, the meeting tonight. Our first order of business this evening is approval of the agenda. The agenda includes remarks, recognitions, instructional highlights, public comment, announcements, approval of the consent agenda, reports and items for information, unfinished business, new business, and comments from board members.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Bothwell to approve the amended agenda. Any second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Balance. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor of amending the agendas, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. The amended agenda has been approved. Oh, what is it? The what? Oh, approve of the agenda, excuse me. Alright, so the motion was to approve the agenda. And it was, again, voted unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda? No? Pardon? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm reading a script. Alright. Next on the agenda is recognitions. Dr. Keith Parker? Is that alright? I'll pass on the chairman's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We want to start out by thanking both Cape Hatteras Elementary School and Cape Hatteras Secondary School for hosting the Board of Education today and for the teachers and staff and students that were gracious enough to let us in their classrooms and to speak with us and show us around. So we want to thank both of those schools for their outstanding work that is going on. And we also want to recognize tonight some amazing staff and students from Cape Hatteras Secondary School. And I want to ask the wonderful and amazing Beth Rooks, who's principal of Cape Hatteras Secondary School, to come forward with her wonderful and amazing assistant principal, Ms. Annette O'Neill. And they're going to share some really exciting things with you from the students today. So Beth, will have you come forward.
Thank you for that wonderful and amazing introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Chairman Tauber and the members of the board. We appreciate you all being here this afternoon and we hope you enjoyed your visit. So Cape Hatteras Secondary School would like to recognize a few of our exemplary teachers and staff members for going above and beyond. This evening, first, we would like to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Natasha Pharaoh. Ms. Natasha has been a member of our school family since 2011, where she served as an exceptional children's teacher. And then in 2014, Natasha was hired as a math teacher and has served in this capacity ever since. She is dedicated, very supportive, and a patient teacher who always puts her students first. Ms. Natasha, will you please come forward? Next this evening, Ms. Spruul was unable to join us, but we would like to recognize her. Ms. Spruul has been a member of our hurricane family since 2007. She has served as both a guidance secretary as well as our school's receptionist. Ms. Phyllis runs our office and secretly the school, and with ease, and knows exactly what is going on in the building at all times. She quickly navigates questions with ease and keeps our students and staff moving right along, all with a pleasant smile. So we would like to recognize Ms. Phyllis as our Classified Employees of the Year. Next, we have Mr. Clay Teederman. Mr. Teederman serves our students daily as a science teacher. For those of you who don't know, he has taught both high school and middle school science. And he began his journey here in 2017. Mr. Teederman provides many opportunities for our students to broaden their skillsets by sponsoring our fish hatchery, our surf club, and our ocean science class. Most recently, Mr. Teederman was accepted into the Principal Preparation Program through NC State, and we are extremely proud of him. We would like to call Mr. Teederman forward and recognize him for his dedication to our students and community. This evening, we are going to also recognize three of our, or two of our students, one student who was unable to be with us, Elizabeth Muller, Chloe Fleyth, and Jennifer Monell on their DECA project, Lose the Phone and Get Your Head in the Zone. Elizabeth and Chloe and Jennifer have all been busy collecting data and encouraging our students to take a break from their cellphones and interact more with their peers and participate in healthy activities. We would like to recognize them for their work. So Elizabeth and Chloe, if you would, please come forward. Under Mr. Teederman's leadership, Cape Hatteras Secondary School has been recognized for the third year in a row for their work to protect the planet by collecting, recycling, and having water stations placed in the school. And this has all been done in order to cut down the number of plastic bottles that we are using in the school. We appreciate all of the hard work for his students as they have been collecting all of this recycling to help keep our planet and oceans clean. Will the following people, people, please come forward to be recognized? Max Cirrus, Gracie Wyatt, Colton Allen, Misha Nuzzo, Trey Wyatt, Joey Latiri, Wyatt Cannon, and Olivia Rooks. We also have one very special community member who is with us this evening. He is a former graduate of Cape Hatteras Secondary School, and it has been instrumental. He's been instrumental in helping us do the recycling, and that's Noah Dixon. And if we could also have Mr. Teederman also, please come forward. OSHA 10-hour training teaches basic safety and health information to entry-level workers in construction and general industry. It is part of the OSHA outreach training program, which explains serious workplace hazards, workers' rights, employer responsibilities, and how to file an OSHA complaint. We have had several students who have taken this outreach training program and have achieved having a certificate for the 10-hour training program under Mr. Elvin Hooper, who recently passed away, along with Mr. Keith Durham. So the following students, please come forward to be recognized. Derek Cunningham, Derek Garcia, Jonah Jordan, Johnny Metacarpah, Garland Midget, Jonathan DiAlovera, Kyle Hibbs, James Quest, and along with Mr. Durham. Please come forward. Photoshop and InDesign are in demand across industries. Employers and clients are seeking creative talent with the technical know-how and ambition to handle their content creation needs. Adobe Certified, excuse me, Adobe Certified Professionals stand out because they have validated their coveted skills through certification. They can be trusted to work effectively with the world's most powerful tools for video editing and motion graphics. To earn an Adobe Certified Professional certification, you must pass a 50-minute exam that tests your familiarity with the core product features and the capabilities, common workflows, basic project management, and foundational industry concepts. Would the following students, please come forward? Jasmine Abara, Savannah Johnson, Ethan Lord, Andrew Perez, John Connor, Lizbeth Lozano, Kira Fob, and Devin Lester. Thank you. This month, several of our very talented students' hard work was displayed at the Glen Year Ghost Fleet Gallery. And a few of our students received honorable mentions for their outstanding work. Would the following students, please come forward? Chase Dixon, Aiden Throne, Misha Nuzzo, Elena Benani, and Gabby Baker, along with Mr. Paxton. The Cape Hatteras marching band had a highly successful and competitive season this year. The band traveled to two competitions. And while being one of the only competing bands to carry a large percentage of middle school students, Hatteras came out strong in the end. The Marching Canes performed their blockbuster show, Ready, Set, Action, which featured some of the biggest movie themes from all times. At the Peanut Festival Battle of the Bands in Edenton, North Carolina, the marching band took second place in all categories and second place overall in Division 1A. The Marching Canes then traveled to Pasquattan Panther Classic and also brought back a second place and a first-place visual in a Division 1A. Accepting on behalf of the marching band this evening are seniors Elizabeth Muller and Hobson Fry. Will you please come forward? Several students auditioned for the North Carolina Eastern Regional Honors Band this year. The eastern region consists of all districts The eastern region consists of all districts from Greenville to the coast and as far down as south of Havlock. Cape Hatteras musicians had outstanding auditions, and we are proud to have five students to make the honors band this year. These students are invited to UNCW to work with guest clinicians and perform a concert together later this month. These students will have the opportunity to rehearse under some great clinicians such as Dr. Eris Golden, who is the Assistant Director at Michigan State University, and Dr. Margaret Underwood, who is the Director at Western Carolina University. These talented students are in for a great musical experience. Would the following students please come forward? Claire Oden, who I think is actually up at the beach already doing something with band, the clinic, Elizabeth Muller, Riley Oberbeck, Max Cirrus, and Cody Baines. So while they're coming forward, Elizabeth Muller plays the clarinet, Riley plays the French horn, Max Cirrus plays the baritone, and Cody Bane is a mean man on the mallets. I'm not sure that these two ladies are here, but Wake Forest University Summer Enrichment Camp for STEM provides students with hands-on activities with Wake Forest staff, undergraduate student leaders, and students from around the world while participating in a variety of very challenging STEM activities. Two of our students were applied and were selected to participate based on merit. We are very excited for Samantha Sheena and Australia Olan campus to participate in this activity and to experience STEM at such a rigorous level. All right, and we have one more student to recognize who is also traveling up the beach for the band concert this evening. As a part of her internship experience at Cape Hatteras Elementary School and her lifelong goal to become a teacher, Melanie Ramirez completed her CPR and first aid training while interning at Cape Hatteras Elementary School. We would like to celebrate Melanie and her goal to become a teacher and for earning her certification. Mr. Chairman, this concludes our recognitions at this time.
Thank you, Beth and Annette, and to your wonderful staff, and congratulations to all awardees. Next, we will have our instructional highlights. Cape Hatteras Secondary School Media Center and Electronic Gaming Team, Dr. Parker.
So this evening, for our first part of our instructional highlights, I would like to introduce two very special and very intelligent young ladies who have put together an outstanding DECA project that is extremely impressive. So we have asked them to come here tonight to present this to the board. The name of the project that they're working on is called Lose the Phone and Get Your Head in the Zone. So I'm gonna turn over the microphone to these young ladies, Elizabeth Muller and Chloe Flight, and I'm gonna let them begin their presentation.
Hi, so our project is called Lose the Phone, Get Your Head in the Zone, and it's for DECA, which is the business club here at school. Can you go to the next slide?
So our project is a community awareness project, and the topic was excessive phone usage. Our goals were to encourage students to use their phone less and to interact more with their peers, emphasize the importance of healthy phone use, and increase student engagement in non-technology-driven activities.
For the first part of our project, we sent a survey to everyone in the high school, and we got 70 responses. Our goal was to research how much time students in our school spend on their phones and how their phones affect them.
So every high school teacher was given a bin so students could put their phone in, and this encouraged students to give up their phone during their classes. Every time a student participated in this, their name was put on a sign-in sheet, and they were entered into our raffle for a chance to win a prize, and the prizes were all donated by local businesses. The initiative was five weeks long, and we drew our raffle once a week.
The next part of our project was called Kickin' at Old School. We held a kickball game during Hurricane Watch once a week for four weeks. Students could play an organized game of kickball, play soccer, football, or volleyball, or just talk with other students. The students who stayed off their phones got a prize at the end.
We created a website and survey for the community to use. The goal of this was to explain our project to community members and increase awareness of the negative effects of phone usage.
Can you click on the link? Okay, so this is the website that we made for the community, and it tells about our project, the activities we did for our project, our different roles within the project, ways to combat excessive phone use, the importance of a healthy relationship with technology, our survey for community members, and then we thanked local businesses who donated prizes for our raffle. And that was all the activities for our project.
Thank you, ladies. This was truly a gift to our students because they had a great time playing kickball and participating in a lot of events that have been done through this DECA project. For our last part of instructional highlights this evening, I would like to present to you a video that has been put together of our media center and our latest renovations since Hurricane Dorian. As you all are well aware, a couple of years ago, we had Hurricane Dorian that came through Hatteras Island and ripped this very roof off that we're standing under right now, as well as did an extensive amount of damage to our media center. At that time, through Central Office supporting us with grants, as well as some insurance money to also repair some of the things that have been damaged, we were able to recreate a vision of what our media center wanted truly to look like. At that time, we got together as a school community, and we started recreating our vision. And at that point, we all decided that it wasn't what we had experienced in our lifetime, but what our students were going to be experiencing in their lifetime. Through this vision, not only were we able to, I guess, replace and update some of the books that had been flooded through, but we were also able to put in a Mac lab, and we were also able to put in a virtual lab, which is very impressive. Through this virtual lab, we now have e-gaming, which you will hear here momentarily, is a sport that is not only done here on Hatteras Island, but is, at this point, we have students in our country who are getting scholarships to go to colleges to actually participate in e-gaming, who would ever thunk it. But that's where we are. And so we have several students who are participating in it, and we're gonna be showing you tonight's video that is going to highlight some of the things that we have going on in the media center.
I'm JB Petetti. I graduated Cape Hatteras Secondary School in 2014, went to East Carolina University, studied criminal justice, came back to work for the sheriff's office, and now I am also the coach of the Cape Hatteras Hurricanes eSports Program. When the school built the new library, they implemented a massive, massive overhaul on eSports. So the whole setup behind us is set ready for eSports. The PCs that are provided are super, super high-quality. I think it's a huge builder for teamwork and involves students that aren't traditionally associated with normal sports. So when kids miss that opportunity to play basketball, football, something like that, this provides the teamwork opportunity, showing you can work well on a team, you can communicate clearly and effectively, you know how to work well within your own community, and you know how to keep each other accountable. Right now, a lot of colleges are starting to implement eSports programs into the varsity level. I know tons of schools have the club-level opportunity where they offer partial scholarships. At the varsity level, they're able to offer room-and-board scholarships and even a full tuition scholarship. So depending on where you go, you'll be offered some capacity scholarship money. The way we present it to the parents is, this is a step toward competing in eSports, but what we're trying to teach is that there's way more beyond that. So you're gonna have career opportunities in game design, marketing, management level, creative development, anything like that.
The reason I enjoy being a part of the eSports team is, for the first time in my entire life, I feel like I belong to something. I feel like there's a group of people who I relate with, there's a team, and I get to learn new things about students that I never got to learn before. It gives me the opportunity to be myself in an environment where I don't always get that opportunity.
The way our schedule works, we're gonna have one practice day in the school, and Mondays and Fridays will be competing. They're gonna be competing for around an hour, hour and a half, is about how long a match lasts. We're part of the High School eSports League, which is a national league. They can be competing against a school in California one week, they can be competing against a school in Raleigh the next. So all of the computers here are really, really high-end machines. They have Intel i9 processors, and all of them have a really high-end Nvidia-brand graphics card. They're basically cutting-edge in terms of ability. These can run a virtual reality program for school and for gaming. They can have lessons online, they can do a dissection online. If they want to do any type of lab work that may not be readily available here, they're gonna be able to have that opportunity to do it in virtual reality.
I think it will be good for students to get that help with teamwork, because teamwork is a fundamental part of just life in general. Gaming itself has so much potential to help everyone.
So at this time, I would like to call our team up with Ms. Ferguson, who is our media coordinator or librarian, and we have a couple members of our e-gaming team, one member of our e-gaming team. If you all would like to come forward, please. Three members, sorry. And these individuals have been coming already to practices. Unfortunately, our coach is on duty tonight. He's a sheriff's officer, so he was unable to be here with us. But we do have our students and Ms. Ferguson available if the board has any questions.
Any questions?
Good, Carl.
I got a comment. That media center looks awesome, guys. I mean, whoever designed it looks great. If you haven't seen it beforehand, it was like a dungeon in there. It was terrible. But now, it's beautiful. And the gaming stuff's pretty awesome, too.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Farley and his team for having the vision to project this media center. It is a state-of-the-art center. I'd also like to thank Elizabeth and Chloe for their efforts on the electronic gaming project. It seems like it's catching on, and it's a great project, so kudos.
I guess I have one quick question. What kind of record do you guys have?
Record in what particularly?
In the competition, because you're competing against other schools, correct?
We are. This is our first year having the opportunity to do this. Personally, between us, I'm not sure.
It looks like you're having fun at it.
We do. I think it's nice that it's shaping up towards the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll now move to public comment, and I'll read the following statement before we begin. The Deer County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for questions and answers or for impromptu board responses. The board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comments if it is necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed with the administration at the school or central office levels or through other existing board policies, and those alternatives are encouraged by the board. The board appreciates courteous and respectful presentations. Obscene, vulgar, indecent, abusive, threatening, or profane statements or statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. As you're aware, each person or organization will be granted three minutes. We will be using an electronic timing system that will provide the speaker with a green light when time starts. The light will move to yellow when the speaker has one minute left. The red light indicates that time is up, and the speaker will be asked to leave the podium to allow for the next speaker to address the board. As a reminder, documents that speakers wish to provide to the board were to be submitted when signing up for public comment, and we ask that they not be distributed at this time. The first person signed up for public comment this evening, and you'll have to excuse me, Jason, I can't read your last name. So if Jason is in the audience, please step forward.
Collier.
Collier.
Collier, a French teacher. You used to like to call me Collier. Am I on the clock? I'm gonna have to make this quick. We've got a basketball game starting for my son at 6:00 that I'm supposed to be coaching. Jason Collier, Frisco. My son Jackson goes to the elementary school. He's seven years old. I'm here tonight because I feel compelled to speak. I feel like I represent a growing number of parents that although we may not have agreed with or been fans with a lot of the restrictions and guides, things that have gone on, we've supported them. We've done our best to support them in the effort to keep our kids in school. In light of where we are with all of this, and of course, I'm speaking to COVID and masking and the pandemic, in light of where we are with the massive community spread, the lack of catastrophic outcomes that we're seeing, we really want to see a vote to go masks optional. It's killing a lot of us to see our kids growing up. It's killing a lot of us, see our kids growing up in these masks and spending them out of their life in that mask that they are. I've said since the start of this, one of my main concerns was the, I believe in a healthy immune system, the body's ability to, the need for it to take care of itself, to fight off infection. And there's decades and decades and decades of support for a healthy supply of germs, viruses, so forth and so on, in basically training your immune system to take care of itself. There was a great article in the Wall Street Journal this past week that caught my eye, and I found additional support here through the proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, United States of America, that speaks to the hygiene hypothesis and the human microbiome. And I'm not going to spend my remaining time here going through it. There's some great things that I'd like to share with other folks. What I want to close with, the main point I wanted to leave here with today or to come here with today was, I'd like to, if I could say respectfully request, that a survey, a meaningful survey, be conducted of the parents in Dare County. By meaningful survey, I don't mean a one little drop in the Island Free Press that generates 100 respondents. I mean, like, a well-publicized, marketed papers home to the parents in their folders, or, you know, we get texts when the school bus is going to be late. Something that generates a meaningful response of the parents, excuse me, this isn't COVID, I promise, the meaningful, a meaningful response of the parents in Dare County to find out where we stand. Because if it's a 50-50, if 50 want to see masks optional, can I please have one more minute?
Jason, I apologize. It's limited to three, so we can get people on.
All right, well, here's the thing, real quick. A meaningful response, because if it's a 50-50.
Jason, three minutes means three minutes. I'm sorry.
If it's 75%, 65% or 75%, then I'm looking at seven seats right here who aren't voting reflective of the interests of the people.
Bobby Wells. Bobby Wells.
I'm here to share my story. I have a son with autism in Dare County schools. My son also suffers from mental health issues. I have made it abundantly clear in my son's IEP meetings that my son should not be given access to inappropriate reading material, including materials from the rainbow section of the school library. Just last night, I found this book in my son's book bag, another appropriate book from the high school library. My directive as a parent of a minor with a disability has been ignored and obviously continues to be ignored. My son was allowed to access such books from a teacher's personal selection. Upon discovering this book, I immediately contacted the school, and I was asked to return the book, as it was the teacher's personal book, and it never should have been in the student's selection. I was lied to then, and I've been lied to currently and now. My son just checked out this exact same book from the high school library this past week, and this book is available to any Dare County student as an electronic book. Now, any children in the audience, please cover your ears or leave the room. Unlike the Board of Education, I do care what you hear and what you read. So here are just a few sentences, only two, from page 184 of the book titled "More Happy Than Not" by Adam Silvera. Kenneth was fucking gunned down yesterday, and it's all Kyle's fucking fault. Kyle couldn't fucking help himself and just had to fucking fuck Jordan's sister, even though we all fucking knew Jordan is the kind of fucking guy who would fucking kill someone if he fucking popped.
Bobby, I think we get, I think we get the point.
Okay. That language is in your library. That language is used 24 times in one paragraph. The book is currently available in both the middle school and high school libraries, as are other 50 of these inappropriate books. This is not news. This issue has been brought to your attention before. It's unfathomable that any adult can listen to that short excerpt and claim that this book has any true literacy value for students. These books are harmful, they're confusing, they strip children of their innocence, they devalue morals, and I know because I'm living it and experiencing it with my son. Even more shocking is that many of these titles are only available as eBooks, and they're on their child's Chromebooks. I'm not sure many of you are God-fearing Christians, but let me remind you of Matthew 18:6. If anyone causes these little ones to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and be drowned in the depths of the sea. Let me share a little secret. You have caused my son to stumble by continuing to allow this filth in our children's libraries. I'm now struggling to undo the damage your complacency and your lack of leadership has
Thank you, Ms. Wells. I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Wells. Ms. Amanda Lotus? Amanda Lotus? L-O-T-U-S, Amanda?
A-S, actually.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Hello, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. Here we are in month 25 of a two-week flatten the curve, and you, Superintendent Farley, and Board of Education still refuse to provide parents and other stakeholders with basic information. So here's what we know. We know both the board and administration have not been truthful or transparent about the strings attached to ESER funding. We know that the ESER funds that Dare County schools are receiving run through September 2023. We know that Superintendent Farley has been the signatory on contracts to accept these funds. We also know that he has violated a primary requirement by not soliciting public input to revisit and revise the plan every six months, as the American Rescue Plan requires. What we don't know is the laundry list of assurances you've agreed to with the state of North Carolina to receive your $5.2 million. So let's try this again. Here's the ESER funding, but it's missing information that we, the people, are entitled to know. Dare County Citizens for Constitutional Rights is serving you with a public records request for one, all documentation regarding ESER III interim final requirements, grant conditions, and LEA assurances.
We've already accepted that.
So number one, all documentation regarding ESER III interim final requirements, grant conditions, and LEA assurances between Dare County schools and NC State Board of Education and/or NCDPI. And number two, all documentation pertaining to the subgrant award notification and any and all attachments to for ESER III funding from the state of North Carolina. Your continued obfuscation from day one has caused distrust. Dare County parents, citizens, and children deserve better. Those with nothing to hide, hide nothing. We look forward to your truthful response. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Amanda. Courtney Haynes.
We have been patient. For months, we have been gavelled, silenced, rudely admonished, sneered at, asked for our papers, and threatened with arrest. We have been forced to mask our children against our will. Some of our children have been targeted and discriminated against. Your own FOIAed emails illustrate elementary school administration conspiring against young children. We have witnessed the mental health decline in Dare County teenagers, many of them having their entire high school experience stolen. We listened when you admitted that masks are not being worn to prevent illness. We listened when you admitted that there was psychological harm being caused. And then we listened to you vote to continue it. We have been derided in the media by the superintendent, called conspiracy theorists, and falsely smeared as the cause of low teacher morale in Dare County. We have been locked out of online library catalogs and lectured about following policy 3210, even as dozens of books, obscene books, remain in Dare County school libraries. We have warned you about CT3 and CRT creeping into schools, and you have ignored us, despite TED Talks, Pew surveys, and News ELA articles which document its existence. After all, there's not a class called CRT 101, so it must not exist. We are done being patient. Tonight, you are being served with 28 letters of intent to file claims against your linebacker, errors, and omission liability policy. The letter details 26 state, federal, and international laws that you are violating.
I'm sorry, you can't do this. Okay? You can't do this.
We are allowing you 10 business days to correct your lawlessness, or these claims will commence. I will remind you that each claim carries a $2,500 deductible. We are requiring the following. A thorough sweep and removal of all obscene material from school premises, including electronic access. Stop all discussion or consideration of test-to-stay programs.
Hello? You were asked not to distribute the.
Or any other plans for onsite testing.
You were asked not to distribute documents here.
Cease all advertisement and coercion regarding COVID-19 vaccinations. Halt all policies that require universal masking, masking without parental consent, or discrimination based on masking. End the unlawful quarantine of healthy children. Craft and pass policy to prohibit CRT in any form in Dare County schools. See Union County or Johnston County for policy template language. Return the 20% of ESER III funds.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Thank you. Let's be civil here, and let's respect the, just let me finish here, okay? Let's be civil here, let's respect the process. Those documents were supposed to be submitted beforehand. Please don't come up. Okay? Okay? Okay. Next, Ms. Brewer. Ma'am? Next, Ms. Brewer.
Before I begin, I do want to say, you can't make policies without a board vote. So just so that we're aware, we are still allowed to pass out your documentation, and you have been legally served. All right, so I have two documents here in front of me. I have an email from the Secretary of State, Cody Kinsley, and the State of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services here. This email was written from Cody Kinsley to the Honorable Senator Deanna Ballard, and it was dated January 5, 2022. In the middle of this email, it says, "The toolkit itself is not a legally enforceable document, but rather strong recommendations for schools on how to reduce the spread of COVID-19." This would be your toolkit. At the top of the toolkit, there's a footnote right here, just so everyone's aware, these documents are available at daretoshareobx.org, or will be by the end of tonight. This little footnote that has a number 1, if you go down to the bottom, it says disclaimer, "This document is not intended to provide legal advice." So I want to talk to all the parents that are still out there in Dare County schools, and I would like to tell all the parents that are out there, I encourage you to go to your local police department and have them legally escort you onto the public property that you pay for if this vote does not go to mask optional. Both of these documents from the state of North Carolina, both say that what you all are doing is not legally enforceable. You do not have the right to ask us for our papers. You do not have the right to force children into masks that do not want to be masked. We don't care if there's people that are out there that actually still fear this, and I'm sorry that they do. Their mainstream media of CNN is actually coming out now and saying that what they're doing is harmful to children, and that we should consider taking the masks off our children. And if you go back to last month's board meeting, when I quoted the World Health Organization in stating that 0.98% of the mortality rate of the people that died with COVID, that contracted COVID, though that same rate was whether it was in the United States or whether it was in another country like the United Kingdom or Sweden, that never masked their children. So that is proof that the masks do nothing. CNN has also come out to say that 40% of the numbers of people that were said to have had COVID in hospitals just happened to test positive. And I remind you that water has tested positive, mangoes have tested positive. 40% of the people in the hospital that have said to have had COVID were actually just there for broken hips, or were just there to have heart surgery, or were just there because they had some other thing like cancer and they were receiving treatments and just happened to test positive. So for the last two years, you all have illegally masked children, abused children, caused mental health disorders, caused drug overdoses, as we have recently witnessed. If these children were actually truly happy, they wouldn't be doing drugs in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. I can't read her. Jessica, when you come up, when you tell us your last name, please. Okay, thank you.
Jessica, the popular one. I just wanted to make sure. Wow. I was just going to come and talk about, as a concerned parent, a little bit about the teacher morale. And I've sat in a few school improvement team meetings lately, and it's sad. So I just feel like the teachers are really overworked, and their task load just keeps getting bigger and longer and longer and longer, and they're exhausted, and then our kids have exhausted, burnout teachers, and we want them to have enthusiastic, excited, want-to-be-there teachers. I hear a big complaint is that they get teacher workdays added into the schedule, and then they're filled with trainings and meetings, and they can't do what they want to do or catch up because they're bogged down. And when they finally feel like they've got it together, someone says, "You got to do this," and turn in this, and it just seems like it's a lot. Some other counties have hired some subs to take some of the load off, so maybe work in the classrooms so that the teachers can check off some of these state requirements. So I'm all fired up. I don't know, it just seems like they're just really overworked, and it's coming out in the classrooms, and our kids have teachers that don't want to be there. And on a national level, you're watching them walk out of the doors, and I just don't want to watch that happen to Dare County. So we've got to do something. We've got to take some load off. And then I wanted to talk just a second about the substitute line. It's like super archaic. I've been approved by the board to be a sub. I've signed up, I've applied, I've filled out the new employment, and I signed up for the number, and if it wasn't for having friends in the school system that gave my number to secretaries who are texting me, that phone system never rings. I've never gotten one call from it. So maybe we need to come up with an app or a link on a website, and like, teachers should have something way more streamlined to find a sub. There's available subs. I'm one of them. I'll work tomorrow, but my phone is not ringing. So somebody needs to fix that, and somebody's got to help lighten the load on these teachers. It's getting really bad, and I don't want to watch our skilled, dedicated, good teachers leave the profession because they can make as much money serving tables at Dirty Dick's all summer and not have half the stress. So we got to do something.
Thank you, Jessica. Reece Stecher. Reece Stecher, S-T-E-C-H-E-R. Reece, are you here?
I don't know how many people the stadium holds, but it's close to 100,000, I think. It doesn't matter whether it's 100 or 80 or whatever it is, but they're going to be side by side by side by side. The majority of them are going to be adults. There's going to be kids there, but nobody's going to have to wear masks. Meanwhile, for the last two years, you've made our kids wear masks. This should have never happened. Children should always be the number-one priority over everything. You guys have taken two years of our kids' lives. Those years are gone, and our kids will never get them back. I've learned a lot over the past two years. I've learned that masks don't work. I've learned that vaccines don't work. Booster shots don't work. Y'all might remember, I come to every. Y'all might remember, I come to every meeting, I wasn't here last month. That's because I had COVID for the second time after being vaccinated. A week later, my wife got COVID after being vaccinated twice. I've learned that there are a lot of elected and non-elected adults in North Carolina, some in this room, that blatantly put money in politics ahead of our children. I've learned what a bed means. There are no beds readily available at any North Carolina mental health facilities for adolescents over the past two years. They are all full with children that were not there before the mandates. We know that suicide rates are up 51% since the start of the mandates. There have been well over 100 adolescent suicides in North Carolina since the start of COVID compared to zero adolescent fatalities of COVID since the mandates. Those suicide deaths are on those of you that were in charge of the COVID mandates that denied our kids the ability to be kids. Drug overdoses are up too. We just had one last month at first flight. Why in God's name has HHS spent the past two years keeping our kids from being kids with COVID mandates while not doing a damn thing about the suicides and drug overdoses caused by the mandates? Hopefully tonight, you guys are finally going to do what you should have done six months ago. You're hopefully going to do what New Jersey and Oregon, of all places, New Jersey and Oregon have gotten rid of mandates, and Dare County, North Carolina, still hasn't. Hopefully, you're going to bring back parental choice along with getting rid of spot tracing and quarantines. But don't think for a minute when you vote to let our kids be kids again that you've done something great and that you should be proud of what you have, because you haven't. You guys haven't done squat over the past six months. You used a non-legally binding fool kit as your excuse to do what you've done to our children. The fool kit that Courtney just read about, the letter from the governor that says it's not legally binding. If I've heard it once, and I've heard a thousand times, that you guys' hands are tied, we can't do anything. You were not proactive leaders, you were reactive followers. You should have, could have, would have done what-
Thank you, Reese.
The people at Union County-
Thank you, Reese, appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Carter, John Carter? John Carter? One more.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. Words matter. And you probably, you may recall from a couple of meetings ago, I've spoken to you before about religious education in school. And so, I want to read to you from the North Carolina State Constitution. And I'll start with the preamble. "We, the people of the State of North Carolina, are grateful to the Almighty God, the sovereign ruler of nations, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, and acknowledging our dependence upon Him. For the continuance of those blessings to us and our posterity due for the more certain security thereof and for the better government of this State, ordain and establish this Constitution." Now, the other item in the Constitution I want to visit is Article 9, titled "Education." If I can get there. So Article 9, Education, Section 1. Now, why is it Section 1? I would suspect that it's probably preeminent or the most important thought within this section of the Constitution. It reads, "Religion, morality, and knowledge, being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools, libraries, and the means of education shall forever be encouraged." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Michael Reed?
Hi, my name is Mike Reed. I want to introduce myself. You have never met me. My family and I moved down here from New York. We have four boys. Three of them are in the school system here at Dare County. But what I can tell you is you're heading in the wrong direction, Mr. Farley. You got to look at me, I'm not lying to you. It's going to get worse and worse and worse. All the board members up there, you've got to stop. You've got to stop. And I know you threw the papers down, and that's okay. Even though you disrespect me, I still respect you. But we care about every single person in this community. So whether you are for masks, against masks, I respect your decision 100%. Whether you're for the vaccine or against the vaccine, I respect that 100%. But the last two months, our fourth graders have been coming home saying he has a hard time breathing. So if you care about my child, you got to take these masks off. They're doing about nothing. You can look at all the evidence. Show me evidence that a mask works, and I'll believe you. But there's not the evidence out there. Show me that the evidence for the vaccine works, and I'll believe you. But that's not out there either. But what you're doing is you're destroying the kids, you're destroying the teachers. Coming out of New York, I felt like I was leaving hell on earth. And if you continue, Mr. Farley, I'd totally respect you, but you cannot continue on this path, because it only gets worse and worse. You can see the divide. I want to bring the community back together. We need to see these smiles on these kids' faces. We're never going to bring this community together unless you stop this tonight. So, my kid can't breathe, and you guys are saying, "Oh, that's not okay." He has an IEP at the school. He went into kindergarten non-verbal, and we've gotten him to the point where he's very verbal now. He's basically at a regular fourth grader, you know, where a normal fourth grader would be, but he can't breathe. So now, tonight, if you guys don't vote for mask optional, I have to make a decision, and I love this community. I'll do anything for this community. Believe me, when I got down here, our family was so happy. And now we're back feeling like I'm in New York. It's hell on earth there, Mr. Farley, I can tell you. Please, I don't care if you got to give the money back. 70% of these houses aren't even lived in, but everyone pays school taxes. We should have a ton of money here. Everyone would probably, I don't even know, pay a little more taxes to get rid of and make up for the $9 million. I don't know, we bring in billions of dollars every summer. I mean, just please give the money back. My kid can't breathe, and I got, we got to stop this tonight. Is anyone listening? Please, just stop. It only gets worse. And-
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Brewer? We're not allowed to do that. I'm sorry? It's that... I would ask Mr. Schwartz to address the issue.
The person has to be here for public comment. That was, those were special procedures that were adopted for that meeting. This is different.
Ms. Brewer, we have to move on. On the advice of counsel, that's where we're moving.
So you are telling us, I just want to be clear, and I want it to be recorded-
Hold on, hold on. If you'd like to put the child's name down here, put the child's name down here. There's no harm in putting a name down here.
We have FOIAed emails where they singled out families-
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you respectfully to sit down, please.
Then I want to say this on recording so that people have it available. You can go to my Facebook page-
You're going to have to take your place. We're trying to conduct an orderly meeting, please. We've got to move on.
The public's done with your orderly. I would let everybody go to my Facebook page, and please listen to this girl's recording, so you can hear what the eight-year-olds are saying about how they feel with masks on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Farley for announcements.
No announcements this evening, Mr. Tauber.
We will now move to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes the Personnel Consent Agenda, minutes of the January 11, 2022. Special and Regular Session Meetings, Budget Amendments, and a donation of funds from the Knights of Columbus for the Exceptional Children Program. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion, we approve the Consent Agenda. Second.
Motion by Ms. Ballance, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Lawler. We have a motion, a second, to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Unopposed, the motion passes unanimously. Next, we will hear reports and items for information from Dr. Farley.
Thank you, Chairman. These are all pretty brief. So the first is the COVID-19 Dashboard. So we've, of course, been posting this every day for about the last three weeks. We've had, for the most part, under 30 students and staff members who've been quarantined status. Currently, there are two staff that have active cases, three quarantined. Only 11 students are active, and 13 students who are quarantined present day. Also related to this is the State has updated, it's called the COVID-19 Contact Tracing Protocols, recently came out. They have not updated the actual toolkit since January 10. When the protocols came out, the changes that were made were only relative to schools that had test-to-stay programs. We do not have a test-to-stay program unless we didn't distribute that information. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Farley.
Okay, next, Virtual School Update. So as the board knows, in the December meeting, we reported that there were 280 students who were in the virtual school. We put some standards in place, particularly in grade 6 through 12, the number of students relative to the classes that they were passing. Presently, as we start second semester, we're down to 150 students who are in virtual. And of the 150, about half are at the high school level, and then about 40 elementary and 40 at the middle school level. We have changed how we're serving students. We've reduced the number of staff that have been involved in the process and cut that down. And so we've moved from about 35 staff members who were actively engaged in tutoring or virtual instruction during first semester to about 15. Questions on virtual? Okay. Next, the 2022 Teacher Working Condition Survey is coming out. It's the North Carolina, I believe it's the first state in the country to come up with a biannual survey to this extent in complexity. So every two years, the State gives what's called the Teacher Working Condition Survey. Every single teacher throughout the state of North Carolina can take it. It's anonymous. There are generally about 75 to 80 questions that are a part of it. And it features primary topics, generally about 8 to 10 primary topics that have to do with facilities, curriculum instructional materials, school safety, teacher leadership opportunities, school leadership. And this year, they're actually adding four or five questions that are also related to COVID, getting teachers' input on the impacts of learning loss. Throughout the month of March, teachers can participate in the survey. It closes March 31. And then somewhere probably in May, we'll get those results back. And we've done comparative to other school systems for the last several years. Got high rankings, particularly in the last couple of years with our professional development. So, we're encouraging all Dare County Schools' teachers to take the survey during the month of March. And then once we get deeper into the spring and those results are released, we'll bring them to the board at a later time. Any questions on the TWC? Okay. And then lastly, under Reports and Items for Information, about three years ago, the State passed a law where annually, we have to give a report to the board. It's called the School Mental Health Support Personnel Report and Funds. And so the law states that we have to give an update on certain positions that are related to mental health. So currently, the update for Dare County Schools in the present year is we're up to five psychiatrists, psychologists. We previously had five a couple of years ago. We cut a position, we've added it back, so there's one additional. We have one additional guidance counselor that's actually in Negshead. So in the Negshead ESRT plan, and their ask was to have interventionist and a guidance counselor, so we've increased guidance counselors by one. And as the board knows, we didn't have social workers prior to 2018. And we added two positions for the first couple of years between 2018, 2019, 2020. And then we added a third position so that we had a social worker in each primary community. We lost that social worker, but we've recently hired that position back. So, that's the report, very short, brief. Any questions from the board?
We do have three social workers now?
Yes, yeah. And they do fantastic work. Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and Ms. Kinsel will present the second reading of the proposed policy manual updates.
Thank you, Mr. Tauber. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of our Board of Education and Dr. Farley. Last month, I presented seven policies that were filtered through our Policy Committee for consideration, and we reviewed various components of these policies, some of which were required by general statute, others were optional to enhance the current policies. Since the first reading of the policies last month, they have undergone a second review, and our attorney, Mr. Schwartz, has provided some additional guidance in terms of some requirements that were not included in the drafts that were originally brought to you last month. The Policy Committee did receive an update of the policies, and they were in your packet for the most part. So what you will find, that we're asking for approval this evening, are several policies relating to various topics. Parent Involvement did have additional revisions. That included a correction of a policy that was cited in the opening paragraph of, I believe it was the first or second paragraph, but it was, we had a different policy number and name, so we replaced that, so it's corrected. We also had, in the board policy meetings in preparation, there were some technical corrections. Again, that included potentially some corrections in punctuation or spacing. One policy that Mr. Schwartz and his colleagues recommended that we completely replace and use the model policy from the School Boards Association is the policy on domicile and residence requirements. The policy that was presented had multiple misrepresentations, to be honest, in terms of using the terms domicile and residency almost interchangeably. So, Mr. Schwartz recommended that we replace that policy in its entirety. So that was in your packet. Again, just one additional revision made in Policy 5023, which was the sex offenders, registered sex offenders policy. And that was an error on my part because the strikeout did not come through in the original policy. So with those corrections and final revisions being presented to the full board, we would ask that you would adopt these policies this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsel. Is there a motion to approve the proposed policy mandates as presented?
I move we approve the proposed policy manual updates as presented.
Motion by Ms. Lawler?
Second.
Seconded by? Ms. Bothwell? We have a motion, a second, to approve the proposed policy manual updates as presented. Is there any discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the policy manual updates as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Discussion of Policy 4231/5021/7263.
The next item on the agenda is discussion of Policy 4231/5021/7263 face coverings for modification for consideration. I'll turn the meeting over to Mrs. Kinsel.
Thank you again, Mr. Tauber. Again, as a monthly requirement, through general statute, the board is required to review the policy regarding face coverings and make a determination whether any modifications should be made or not. With that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Tauber, Chairman, and you can discuss with-
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsel. As required by session law 2021-130, we need to vote on whether or not Policy 4231/5021/7263 face covering should be modified. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Bounce?
I make a motion, we modify the policy.
I'll second.
Read the whole thing. I was going to do it in two separate. Does it need to be in one? Just do the whole thing.
The modifications that you would like to be made need to be-
Oh, I thought- I make a motion that we modify the policy.
Removing-
I'm just making sure I'm reading this right. By removing the following language in the opening paragraph, "The board requires face coverings to be required indoors in all Dare County school facilities," and replace it with the following language. "Though the board encourages students, employees, and visitors to follow public health guidance regarding the use of face covering while in school buildings, such use is not required at this time. The use of face coverings is required only when on school buses or other school transportation vehicles, subject to the exclusions and exemptions in the CDC order that requires the wearing of mask-based coverings on all public transportation conveniences, and striking all sections A through E."
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second. Second by Mr. Woody.
We have a motion and a second to make modifications to Policy 4231/5021/7263 face coverings. Is there any discussion? There's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the motion by Ms. Bounce, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I vote no, out of respect-
Okay.
...to all the teachers I've talked to and the principals I've talked to about this issue, and they've asked, in order to keep the kids safe and the teachers safe, that we just hold on one more month. So I've talked to elementary, middle, and high school principals and multiple teachers, and I will respect their viewpoints, and I'm voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Lawler. I respect your vote. It feels like the motion passes-
Mr. Tauber, do we get a vote from Mr. Twitty?
I believe he voted affirmative.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What was that, what was that vote? In favor of the vote?
Yeah.
In favor of modifying-
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you.
In favor of modifying the policy. So the motion passes six to one, and to make modifications to Policy 4231/5021/7263 Thank you. Okay. Let us carry on, please. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make this effective immediately.
I'm sorry, please.
I said I move that we accept this immediately.
Okay. The motion by Ms. Bothwell is to make the motion for modifications to face coverings effective immedi-
I think it.
David, 20 seconds it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the modification to the masking as effective immediately, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Well, yeah, I'm going to oppose.
Thank you, Ms. Lawler.
Sorry.
So the vote is six to one in favor of making the mask policy effective immediately. Thank you, Ms. Bothwell. All right, thank you.
The next item is in regards to the North Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Committee. The North Carolina School Boards Association's Board of Directors invites each local school board to nominate one of its members to serve on North Carolina State Board Association's Legislative Committee. This individual should be nominated by mid-March through a vote of the full board taking an open session. However, since it's on the agenda today, we'll take care of this today. The Legislative Committee's primary task is to develop the draft NCSBA legislative agenda for consideration and adoption by the delegate assembly. The committee is comprised of a subset, subset, excuse me, of the NCSBA Board of Directors and at-large applicants representing the eight education districts. At-large members will be selected by the North Carolina School Board Association President. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee.
Mr. Chair, let's nominate Mary Lynn Ball.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bothwell? Oh, okay. Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare that nominations for the Legislative Committee are closed. Ms. Bounce has been nominated to serve on the NCSBA Legislative Committee. Would all in favor indicate by raising, not raising your hand, just say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mary Lynn, you have been selected to serve on the NCSBA Legislative Committee. We appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Next, we will discuss the RFP process for selecting a school board attorney. The contract with the current firm is set to expire at the end of June. Enclosed in your board packet is a draft RFP, which outlines expectations for services to be provided, as well as the requirements for submitting a proposal by 5:00 PM on April 8th, 2022, for your consideration. The floor is now open for discussion.
Since I'm not hearing any discussion, I will now entertain a motion to approve the RFP.
Mr. Chair, I move-
Mr. Chair, I move we go forward with it.
Motion by Mr. Twitty to go forward on the RFP. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the RFP letter and process for selecting a school board attorney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the RFP as presented, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I oppose.
Ms. Bounce, okay.
No.
Anybody else? I believe it's five to two. The motion passes five to two. This concludes our business portion of the meeting. I would like to now open the floor for comments from my fellow board members. Mr. Woody?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, that media center is just, it looks great. They did a beautiful job on it, I mean, but-
I would concur.
Yeah.
Ms. Lawler? Anything else? I'm sorry, Mr. Woody, you have anything else?
No, no, I'm good. Oh, no, I do have something else, sorry. Is Keith Durham still in here? I'm going to put my order for a three-by-three.
Ms. Lawler?
I just want to thank Cape Hatteras Elementary School and Cape Hatteras Secondary School for hosting us today. And I love the library.
Ms. Bounce? Ms. Bothwell?
I had a great time today touring the schools. This is my first year that I've been able to do that since COVID kind of took over. I'm very impressed with the Hatteras community in general. It's very obvious that the students and staff here have accomplished a great deal. I was very happy to be here.
Mr. Hester?
Yes, thank you. It was really exciting today going to the different schools and seeing the teachers and the students interact, and there's a lot of great pride in the school, both with the teachers and the students. It really felt welcoming being here, and I really got the sense that the kids were really learning, and I appreciate all the work that's being done to create that atmosphere and the dedication to continue to work through difficult times to make the best. So thank you all.
And Mr. Twitty?
I'm so sorry I was not able to meet today on-site, but I know Hatters, they're proud, they're strong. They do great work, as we all do throughout Dare County schools. So thank y'all so much, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it today.
Thank you for, the community for having us here today, and we appreciate y'all coming down and being here, and we look forward to seeing you next month, and drive safely.
You need a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion, we adjourn.
Second. Second by Mr. Hester. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.